Good evening, welcome to the Better For Youth and Trustee for ECUIC 2024, 25:00, 8:30. And I have a little call.
What's that?
Jennifer Frisano, Erica Santos.
This is my air.
Eric Frisano Bearhart.
Here.
James Welkin.
Here.
The president is here, Julia Floresco.
I'm here.
Julia Floresco. Here. They said one of the attendees signed a brief letter in pledge.
Ms. Barnes.
Good evening, you can please stand forward if you care. If you bow or hit us. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you thanking you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come together to meet as a unit. Well, we pray that you give us wisdom and knowledge with every decision that needs to be made. And we thank you for the many celebrations that we have today with this ECUIC. I'm going ahead and do the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Mr. K. We have several streaming groups and fantastic business folks to recognize.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. So first, we're going to recognize this evening is our students from the Texas Association of Future Educators. So really excited, we're going to hire them back as ECUIC teachers. So recently, we had nine East Central High School students compete in the National Educator Rising Conference that was held in June in Orlando, Florida. The Educators Rising Organization is designed to encourage and engage future educators throughout their high school from post-secondary journey. East Central High School has a robust TAFI or Texas Association of Future Educators chapter that feeds into this nationwide educators' rising organization. We're very proud of the following future teachers and their national recognitions. First up, national champion Keegan Garcia for lesson planning, delivery, and STEM. Keegan, you stay over there because we've got several other students who participated that we're really excited to recognize as well. So also placing in the top ten nationally was Jasmine Trebo for exploring pathing careers. We have Mia Mendez for exploring non-core subjects. Melissa Torres for exploring support services. And we had two exceptional national qualifiers, and that was in Brandon Hernandez and Giselle Pena. Y'all come on up. We'll take a picture of them and then in a minute, I'll ask the teachers to come up as well. So we'd also like to recognize they have two of their teachers, Karen Vitor and Reed Elise Pulser. Thank you so much this year. So there's another group we just want to recognize really quickly is the parents. Thank you so much for your support. Y'all can also please stand and be lucky. Great job. Thank you, guys. Thank y'all. Next, we are going to recognize one of our exceptional future leaders. And really excited to call up Sabrina Vasquez from East Central High School. So Sabrina placed first in Texas and represented herself incredibly well at the national level for the Future Business Leaders of America competition. Making her second trip to the FBLA Nationals competing in the Career Portfolio bin, she finished nationally in the top fifteen of all students across the nation, which is quite an accomplishment considering that this year there was over two hundred and fifty students competing for that same award. We are very proud of her and wish her the best of luck next year as she attends Texas A&amp;M University. Thank you so much and great job. I'd like to recognize her teacher, Mr. Anderson Goodrich. Come on, that's Mr. Goodrich. Great job. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, did you also please stand? Do you have a family with you? No? No family? Okay. All right, next, we're going to recognize one of our business partners. So when we choose business partners in ECUIC, we look beyond the services that they provide. We seek those who share our values, partners who are committed to helping us achieve our mission at the highest level. That's exactly what we have found in Joris General Contractors. With us tonight from Joris is the owner, Gary Joris. You can make your way out. Mr. Joris, thank you for being here this evening. We have golf Robertson, executive. Come on up and I'll call your name. Brad James, executive. Melissa Jordan, Joe Martella, and Lisa Young are project managers. Get some pictures. I have a few more things to say. Sam's taking some pictures. Over the years, Joris has helped us renovate and build key district facilities. You've likely seen their work across our community. Each project wrapped in banners proudly declaring, "Building a stronger community together." And they truly live that message. Joris' team doesn't just show up to the job site, they become a part of the school community. They collaborate closely with campus administrators and even join in school spirit events, dressing up for theme days and delivering school supplies each year to support our students. Beyond the job site, Joris continues to invest in our district. They've been longtime supporters of the ECUIC Education Foundation Gator, contributing generously, sometimes purchasing large ticket auction items and giving them right back to the district. Joris isn't just a vendor, they've become a part of the ECUIC family. Their commitment, generosity, and shared values have made a lasting impact, and we are truly grateful. Thank you, Joris General Contractors, for all the support and help.
Hey, is anyone here to do this public hearing for optional educational school day program? Oh, not. My apologies. So I'm just gonna keep going, I'll be leaving. So let's take about a five minutes recess and we'll be completing by four thirty-five. Thank y'all so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Frisano. I'm glad to be here to talk about the need for my and to share a couple minutes of brief remarks. I am a light mom and a homie and a proud father of our primary schools. And I am a resident of the faculty that helps us for twenty eighteen and the next semester because I believe that every child deserves the quality of education regardless of their zip code. Your work in East Central ECUIC is very close to me. My two cousins, my first name, Liz Bucy and Rosa Alvarado, are both teachers at the at the level of the trade and the leadership department. And I see first-hand their dedication there, hard work, and all the work they bring and all the teachers bring into their country as a student and a teacher. And I also see the challenges that they face, the challenges that are made by the special company of the Boston that are defending our schools and their values and our education and the standards. Although I graduated from the public high school outside of the public house in two thousand and eighteen, but I spent my summers with my grandparents in China. They lived up to eighty-seven, fifteen, sixteen, which passed the year of the fire swap, the yellow fire. They were fucking there. And so, you know, I may have seen you through the door. And I know that you guys are a little more raw, a little more country. And with that, we know that these areas are constantly overlooked by our students. And I know that these areas deserve a lot of attention. This is an area where people probably live, it's a close knit community that has tradition. This is a community where people come and build their life and take their role and everything. People here deserve somebody to build their stand in their community. And we deserve a leader in the state house who knows every community and their culture. And someone can show up, whether it's to want to support me or to be a leader for them set up for the law. And more than anything, we need somebody who applies and protects the promise of our state competition to this community, and that promise is the only other promise we have. So thanks for my guest. Thank you for your support and your interest tonight. I'm running for office to make sure that some districts like East Central High School have every opportunity to be a good candidate.
And if, uh, sneaker, is Dr. Giorga?
Professor President, this is Mr. Scannell. Thank you for having me here. Thank you, Dr. Giorga. We had the honor of attending the District Executive Financial Director's meeting. I was literally in the area, and so I wanted to take this opportunity to let you know that we sold the first part of the newly authorized bond. We sold eight million dollars on July seventh. We were one of the first school districts to go out this summer after the May election cycle. So we were a bit accomplished with two of our books will be about that in May. I'm sorry, July seventh was on last year, June. But we sold eight million dollars. We got a interest rate better than expected and we lowered our budget, so that's good. The other thing we did is we were able to refinance some of your outstanding bonds, about thirteen million dollars. We were able to save your tax rate about seven hundred thousand dollars. So we sold about ninety-three million dollars in total on July seventh. And just as a reflection of how good our credit is and how many people wanted to buy your bonds throughout the country, the underwriters were able to generate bond orders for a total of about seven hundred and eighty-six million dollars. So a lot of nice information that you're offering, so that's a good thing. But anyhow, just really selfishly, just wanted to say thank you more than anything for the opportunity to continue to serve the district. Y'all are a very special district. Y'all, thank Professor Scannell, Ms. Burns, for helping us extract that bond stuff so we could try to beat the rush, which is actually happening right now. So we should straighten that for the third time. So I'm gonna go up now because I need less than two minutes, so I'll take a little turn. So again, thank you very much for everything. Congratulations. It's a very important chance that I will pause this out and it will get taken really well. Thank you very much.
Item number six, public hearing for optional educational school day program.
Yeah, trustees, we bring this to you every year. This is about the sixteenth year of the year that we have applied for the optional educational school day program. As you're very familiar, this is an opportunity for us to have flexible options for serving our most at-risk students to be different, that can drop out of recovery, dropouts, and ensuring that they finish earning their pensions. These students are most at risk. Oftentimes, they've experienced significant trauma in their life that has caused them to miss substantial portions of their education, high mobility, has caused them to miss years of education. Sometimes they get over age, young, teen mothers, and the list of them. Again, this allows us to customize and adapt to the accurate programming, given their very unique circumstances, and to ensure that they get their pension done. Ideally, they get it done in four years from the time they start in high school. Freshmen can finish on time, get a hold of, but sometimes it takes a fifty or a half years for rare contingency and extinction. In most cases, we can avoid that drop out in a certain sense. So what we're bringing later than the consent agenda is this year's application for continuation of program. But this particular item is a public hearing for allowing the public to speak on this topic if they so choose.
Nina, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak to this topic? And item number one, item number seven, which is trustee report. Oh, mean. Just a couple of things I was able to attend to welcome back for the district leadership team. It's like a sea of weed, and then directly after that, I was able to welcome back, welcome in all of our new teachers, new teachers. And so that was a good day. So that was just a couple of things that I've been able to do recently.
I also took the opportunity to welcome back the district members. I was very impressed with all the awards that we have been awarded. Great, 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 yeah. Another thing I want to talk about, obviously, is school bell time. Love this event. You get so much information. I can't lie here. Get different information from here.
Light activity. I'm usually very busy running around, taking pictures, making my collage up here. But I, like my colleagues who are at the DLT meeting, I would give a little speech about leadership. I happen to think I know a few, a thing or two about that, and hopefully the message got across that our support was there. But I also was very impressed with the progress that Mr. Scannell and all of you have made with those awards that were given out. Those numbers look ever-changing and very, very good in my eyes. And I expect a lot of things to happen, very positive. So that was it. Next time, I'll fill up the sheet. I'll fill it up next time.
Before I get into my pictures, I like to, when I visit the schools during the year, I like to always ask the administrative staff, what can we do to make the school safe? So I visited St. Clair, and I brought my attention that when we drop off kids in the morning, parents are in a hurry, they're making U-turns. It really causes houses and I went to Mr. Scannell, we talked to chief. And now we got no U-turn signs, mostly all up and down St. Clair, across St. Clair, and also not parking at designated times. I hope that will prevent and have, well, not prevent, not because I watched and I witnessed parents as they drop off their students in the morning, and they look back and before they even look forward, they tell them. And that's really dangerous, but you know, I hope there's no U-turn sign. I'm pretty sure also this, appreciate it also. Also, I brought my attention at St. Clair also that the lighting was poor during the fall months. At seven o'clock, we drop off some, the lighting was really poor. So I went back to Mr. Scannell and Mr. K, and he sat out, made his staff, and did a survey. Now, because the little kids are going in between cars and parents, you know, they're not, they're not particularly, they're not being careful. So now the parking lot is really, so I hope that will present a half. All right, I'm gonna move it to my pictures. I went through the drill when I went through some football plays. Little Hornets, I went to the high school football after I was upcoming. Sanders, boss of the staff, and they were very appreciative of that drill there. That's a linebacker grill that I'm very pleased with. Okay, that, I wish I could have had some drills like that. That's the little Hornets. That's my grandson, Omeen. He's doing the best he can with it. Okay, as I, I went over to shake the library, John Zil, the librarian at Salado Middle School, and personally, it's real. And we really had a good time. The kids were participating in a drumming and rhythm activity. And I'll be really excited to see Jose Pachore. He presented that thing, so that was really a great event. Also went to the welcome back. The church, very impressed with the foundation of the leadership team. And I was very impressed with how the school ratings at our schools and I want to compliment Mr. Scannell and all of the administrators at those schools. Yeah, hey, that's July the twenty-sixth, that Saturday, that'll be my fifth year. Appreciate it.
I mean, it's a year old. Three years old. So don't have any pictures to share, but we had a great summer. And had an opportunity to go and take our for youth group to Florida. It's our annual trip. We took about seven, well, seventy of us total. I think it was like sixteen, it was two kids, teenagers. And a great, great chance to minister to these young people. I had to fly from there from Puerto Rico. I had to fly to Fort Worth where I had the pleasure of finishing up my master trust team, L-Team, Leadership Team. The one that the public was thankful to went out and supported me, do stuff. I'm so used to having my wife next to me, and it was bittersweet, but she had to drive, drive back to Florida. She did a great job, champ. She flew in where she had to, so I couldn't do all the things that I knew about her. So I'm blessed to have her. And also had the chance to go to DLT as well, and it's exciting to see the effort that's put in and the rewards, like seeing the P's and the A's and the schools. It just brings joy to heart because it's about the kids. And when we see those scores, because our kids are getting the best, and they're, they deserve the best. And I believe we have the best because we have the champions that are out here. Guys, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate what you do and it won't hit kids more because I have grandsons. I have my three boys. My youngest is a senior this year. My two older boys graduate. That's also with the grandbabies, the administrator too. There's something about that. So thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. I really mean that sincerely. So thank you, and I'm excited for this year to start being busy.
Well, I did something kind of unique this summer. I did two camps. And I survived it. One of them was camped in Kingsville, and we took over hundreds of so kids from my church. And they had horseback riding and all kinds of different things. But what was really kind of unique was we had some speakers that came in and talked to parents. Had some federally abundant persons that worked with agencies to help empower parents and get them ready for the school year and that kind of thing. And I forgot to cell phone policy that I was, and so, and reminded them of something that was just waiting to be coming up. So it was very, was fun for the kids, was fun for the parents and everybody. And then the other account that I did was actually at Paul Quinn College. And my girl and I, y'all have that before, they have a college that's involved in our country as well. And so we had over about seven hundred people attended, but over two hundred or so kids. I also love these kids, even in the first, we have, there's a few simple little hornets that that were there as well that loved that organization. And so we did lots of fun things again. They got to do, there's a Scott Talent and just a lot of things. And doing some writing pieces and fun, but yet getting them back, ready to kind of be ready for school. And hopefully they get ready, you know, what it looks like to be the kids around and talking to them. So we're hoping that the hornets that we brought back are gonna be ready and ready to go.
Hi, thank y'all so much. Let's move into like session eight, twenty-four, and session eight point one is more than a day.
Yeah, I'll turn it up to Ms. Barnes. Turn it over to Ms. Barnes, Kristen. I'll provide an update on progress. We made the roundup of the year, so all of it should familiar with, but we just wanted to put a period on it when we move into this year's progress.
All right, good evening. We are so excited to be able to share just some data with you today. Something that I want everyone to keep in mind, we normally update you on your onboard goals, right? We don't have any of that data at this point. It's the summer time. But we did want to be transparent and give you another set of data that you might not have already seen. So typically, we know that we get star results and accountability data, and that wasn't released for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year because of the lawsuit. But it will be released August fifteenth. So we want y'all to see the data, but what we want you to also know is you already responded to the data. So you'll see it, but you'll also, you already know the results, right? So what I want you to see, the twenty-three, twenty-four data, if you take a look there, this is what we started with at the beginning of the year last year. So even though the results weren't released, we internally have systems and ways of calculating the data. And based off that, we had five F ratings, three D ratings, two C ratings, and one B rating. Typically, our process is continuous growth. So we're gonna look at the data, we're gonna create plans, we're gonna respond. So I want you to go back to all of the board meetings that we had and all of the updates that we gave. Every time, it was a hot spot and a bright spot. And every time, it was what are we gonna do about the data to ensure that we're moving? So that's our process. Every time we get any set of data, okay? So this is what will be released, coming out August fifteenth. So now, which you already, have already seen, you'll see that based off of our projections for this year, that there are gains, huge gains. So we know this next year, I mean, based off of our preliminary data, zero F ratings, three A ratings, two B ratings, three C ratings, and four D ratings. Huge gains. So even though the previous data doesn't look exciting, it's gonna come out. We've already done our job with making sure that students are learning and responding and creating the best action plan. So it's exciting, right? So then this goes back to what a lot of y'all saw at DLT. We have the opportunity to celebrate, to go ahead and celebrate some of our campuses. We had the opportunity to celebrate, uh, to go ahead and celebrate some of our campuses. And so they got the opportunity to get some banners. We had Salado that was A rated, Oak Crest received an A rating, Highland Forest received an A rating, and then you had Tradition and you had Sinclair that received a B rating, which is in alignment with our North Star goal, right? So huge things, but even though everyone didn't get A and B ratings, it's important to acknowledge that there were huge jumps, huge jumps. So you may have had an F campus, a campus that had an F rating, but they jumped almost to a C, that's, that's amazing, right? And I can tell you right now, they all pushing for the As and Bs for next year, right? So it's exciting. So what we're gonna do is we are gonna go ahead and just kind of walk you through the process of just from last year all the way until this, this year, some of the things that we've done to go ahead and shift what was happening, right? Some of the action plans, a lot was done, everybody worked really hard, but we just wanna highlight some key points, um, to, to tell you how we can ahead shift that data.
Good evening. I'm gonna try to put on my best Jonathan voice tonight for this. We, uh, as we brought to you earlier this school year, we did a quality student analysis as part of our work with some great schools. And, uh, so these findings are gonna be based off of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we will be bringing another Q S A to you in, uh, the fall, that will show you finding of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year data, uh, but we just wanted to kind of remind you of where we started at as we move through this. Uh, we have three out of eleven campuses that were showing, um, that were showing improvement in academic performance according to STAR going into last school year. Uh, we had early found, we found through some of our work with our behavior, there are early foundational still for state second where it's in that group. Uh, in grades three through ten, we have our map data, which is, uh, part of the, uh, beginning of year, middle of the year, since our students, who engage their growth. We know that that revealed that our campuses were consistently performing below the fifty percent title, so if you remember, the fifty percent title means the average in the country at the moment in time. Um, our literacy performance was outperforming our math performance, but we know that we need to get both of those up to a higher level. And then our reading scores gradually improved with, uh, grade levels, but we were really seeing those scores down at the, the lower levels. Uh, and then we did see a huge jump the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and in this year in our, uh, C C M R accountability, but what we realized with that was that was Texas College Bridge providing us, those were, those were medial services for our students as opposed to our students truly being college ready without having to do remedial work. So, um, that performance was continuing to lag behind. So those are our students who were in a base academics, A P, dual credit, dual enrollment, uh, taking T S I assessments as soon as possible. So again, this is a look back at the year and we're gonna go forward and talk about some of the things that were some drivers, um, in the huge gains that these campus leaders have this year, I'm so proud of. Um, so the first thing that, um, we wanna recognize is that, as Joa mentioned, we are continuously refining these processes and procedures. And so we take a step back and we look to see what was it that caused some of these things? Because we need to be able to replicate these at any given time. Uh, so the first thing that we wanna say is that, um, changing the culture of our system was really critical in this, um, and part of that was raising the expectations. And so when we talk about the North Star goal of completely eliminating our F campuses and having a substantial amount of them as A and B campuses by the year twenty-thirty, and our five board goals that you all have been generous to adopt for us, um, that really raised the expectations of our students. Um, so having highly aspirational goals as a board who have really lifted us up as a district, um, for our students and our staff. The yes we can attitude that maybe kids had if you walked out this year was remarkable. It was really something that helped them and helped our students. Continuous growth is making better and better, we find each year for our district. And so that's something that, um, we are all realizing every year, we are in this system together, and so, uh, we're moving from silos to more of a collective impact for our students. Um, we don't see value in staying in a silo, we, we see value in bringing everybody to the table to, to help students move. Um, and that, that culture shift also resulted in more of a results orientation. So we were looking at what results can we get and how can we get that so that our students are learning better? Uh, and that in turn shifts it us to data driven, uh, a data driven culture. And so some of these campuses, when we walk on and you would see in the, the offices, um, in the P L C rooms, the student's names listed up to, this student needs to move this many spots and we're gonna get them there and everybody on that campus knew what they were looking for. So we're really proud of the culture of these campuses and our district have, uh, really taken a turn to move towards for our students this year. So I'm gonna let Jamie come in and talk about some more specific pieces that we did, um, but just, we wanted to let you know that we really felt that. So clearly, culture was the main driver to get fortunate outcomes, but there were several other things that happened this year that really made it happen. Our staff got really clear about the data that they were looking at, down to a specific students that were the target and what standards those students needed the most work in to make the gains that they need to improve. We to our campuses and provided special report, uh, special supports to them based on their need. Some of those things included our institutional specialists, having maybe more touch points with those campuses. We had a couple of specialists that actually came down the first three weeks at a couple campuses, now taking some support, we had additional coaching, we brought in principal coaches for a couple of our campuses. A retired superintendent from the San Antonio area, we brought in a retired principal from our district, and then a former chief, actually a member of the central office from the district that works with us, and they kind of walked side by side with the principals, being predators, helping them make the adjustments that they needed to make on their campus. We also partnered with the National Institute for Institute of Everest, who has been teaching some N R E T, and that corporation worked with us in looking at planning and then even looking at I T, test, and resources, including evaluations and help. So we know that planning is critical, but we also know that attendance makes a huge difference. We know that we need our students in seats consistently at the campus, they have more time to learn, a lot more opportunity to learn. We also know that that gives them more exposure to routines, procedures, and policies and makes them be able a bit more and not have so much to jump to the future for trying to be creative, so, um, that was a key driver for us as well. And then we also made sure that students wanted more access to online level materials. So that really, let's go again, it was talking about raising those expectations, so the students not needing a level, putting every strategy and support in place to make sure that they have those online level materials in front of them and that they are successful in being able to do that. They gather data for those students, outcomes, and whether these students need to reprocess some of those special, um, times and special programs so that they could have extra time. So a couple of key action steps to really point out, the W I N project, which is what I need, uh, definitely see those school, we knew it, the middle of the year, we weren't quite making up progress that we wanted to make, so, uh, just a little bit inhibited to say how, what can we change this, you know, that we can implement with the staffing that we have and measure if we can work it successful. So the W I N programs, who are coordinated, Darrell Park and Heatherburns, really put in, trained on some new technology pieces that we're dealing with students. They isolated specific standards in math and reading, that were gonna give us the biggest bang for our buck. They provided training for those teachers and then they monitor every single day the implementation of those programs, and they were there walking in classrooms, so if a teacher got stuck or a challenge came up, they would go and coach the teacher on the spot or show them how to navigate the system and even help kids be successful. And that's what worked super, super helpful. We brought in, um, some of our central office staff and we even pulled up some people from other campuses to work on a second teach, so if the students didn't master the content that day in their first period, they will get a second opportunity during that same school day to have them be teach from a highly qualified teacher. It would really help them move that needle in. It was, we had a backup for them, right? If they passed, if they did well on their assessment, they got to go to school or like more fun already, then the kids actually started not doing well on their assessments on purpose because they wanted to be with the teachers that were teaching the second teach and they felt that they were growing. It was just so neat to see those own their own data in those rooms and, oh, I got it for me yesterday, I'm gonna go to four today, or yesterday, I might look like this, tomorrow it's gonna look like this, they were so excited in the year to see what we're taking. We also did some major staffing measures, app legacy, we pulled a teacher out of athletics and went her back in the classroom, she had a proven track runner, helping students grow, and she, you know, we don't talk to her about it, she was like, oh, yeah, coach, I got it. And then her coaches came up over Christmas break and helped her set up a classroom so that she could start teaching right away. Uh, so lots of things that happened, and we, we saw strategic plans across the district. One other highlight is the Palm Valley, P V had probably one of the most detailed plans, student by student, every class, every grade level, every single day, what were they getting? More support to help them grow in the meeting and that was very impressive. They pulled staff from librarians to their P E teachers, anyone they could find, they would grab and utilize them to work in small groups with students, everyone was on board to see that campus grow. Overall, all the campuses were repurposing that specials time, so we did a way for the pre-K specials time at the beginning of the year, which opened up about thirty minutes in the daily schedule, so campuses started being very intentional in how they use that time, rotating different grade levels and different teachers into look at data, look at, you know, give back this forum, this assessment, how are we gonna respond tomorrow? How are we gonna respond next week? And then based on whatever they needed to pivot those back forms, they would change the structure of that specials time to get more grade levels, more time with some grade levels less. And then the last thing we'd like to highlight is because of all this, we feel like campus leadership are really able to focus more on academic time and really gotten in the classrooms more. We've got their own teachers, they have more coaching and more conversations, I felt that they grew more this year than any other year because their support, their administrative team is in, uh, part of it, and helping them get there.
If I may, to any of you, uh, the preliminary data from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, is that your assessment based on some group rate and some average and is there some variance? One, two, three percent variance on that when the outcome comes out of August fifteenth?
Um, the, the accountability is, we use a platform called Axiom, uh, to help us calculate that, and so what I can say is that, uh, we also have staff internally that are calculating using the calculations in each run, but it's calculated by Jonathan's office and by Axiom. It's just a couple of points within each other, but the letter grades have reached this.
So variance will be one to three percent in that name potentially?
At this point, we believe that the final number might change a point or two here or there, but we're very solid over the three.
That's what I want to see, that's, that's exceptional, I mean, this is something exceptional. Congratulations, that's, that's very good to see.
So for example, we're rejecting Sinclair, might see thirty points in increase, it's possible could end up being twenty-nine or thirty-one, but they're solid. Yeah, we're really excited, uh, our partners, uh, here tonight, provide the board with an overview of the driving possibilities grant, uh, looking more excited to be the progress that we've made to set up its implementation this year. So I'll turn it over, uh, to the team, in your business package, trust me, she's got a copy of the net, um, you know, let's sort of introduce themselves, you can follow along the screen as usual, or if you want to follow along and take us, I think you're part of the copy slide there.
All right, good evening. Hi, I'm Melinda Loudon, I am the former communications manager for Toyota Texas. Your friendly Tundra and Sepulveda building plant, about twenty-five minutes that way. Uh, it is an honor to be with you all tonight, uh, for, thank you so much for having us. Toyota Texas is so proud of the Driving Possibilities partnership, um, that we have, and we wouldn't be here tonight without the incredible support of East Central, the central district, of course led by Mr. Stisso, um, and we've gotten to know so many members of the E C I S team, so I'm gonna forget several people, but I have to start with Ms. Palbadeer. This holiday, thank you for, thank you and thank you, Mr. Stisso, for saying yes to this initiative, um, in your district, starting with P V. Uh, the way Ms. Palbadeer and her team have just jumped in, um, is, has been a phenomenal way to get started, um, and we are so excited to get things properly kicked off this year. Um, also, we recognize Dr. Coleman and Ms. Barnes and Mr. Kike, um, team, thank you all for just digging in the best, we have so much to be excited about. Um, we also couldn't do this partnership without, uh, our leaders from Toyota World of America, which I will let them, um, uh, introduce themselves in a minute, and I have to recognize Dr. Minios, who, um, leads the Texas A and M University San Antonio's Institute for School and Community Partnerships. I did it. Uh, so, Dr. Minios, thank you and your team for working so hard to make this a data-driven approach, um, for how we are approaching this with P V, with East Central, um, and a partnership with all of you. Jeanette Morales is brand new to Dr. Minios's team, um, I'm sure Dr. Minios will introduce her, but we are, uh, we're thrilled to have those partnerships, um, alongside us, as well as, um, Romanita Matamarela from, uh, Greater S A C X, the Economic Development Authority, and the S A Works team are just, uh, part of this as well. So it's a privilege to be, um, in your midst, and, uh, we just so look forward to coming back year over year and talking about the amazing progress that we're gonna do together, um, with these fine folks, our employees from the plant, and, um, your teachers and students and administration. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Destiny Whitaker. Thank you. Another E C I S team, so of course, I also wanna shout out is Miss Jennifer Casper, also our curriculum superstar, has been doing great work, um, as part of our work through the mission team. So hello, everyone, my name is Destiny Whitaker, I am a senior analyst on our workforce development team here at Toyota and have the privilege of leading this team from headquarters, um, in San Antonio, and so lovely to be here with all of you. A highlight of our agenda, what we're gonna be talking for today, the what, the why, the how behind driving possibilities for going into the impact of our estate, which, and then the San Antonio journey and our friends. So, how can we right in the opportunity, the what, and the why? Driving Possibilities is focused on preparing people for the careers of tomorrow by addressing root causes that are in tactical learning and incorporating amazing solutions alongside our partners to help reduce those barriers. This is something that is both a business need and a key need, we know from research, in ten years, roughly two billion, three point five million, number continues to increase, manufacturing and STEM jobs will be available, and so industries like ours are definitely reliant on programs like this to build up our STEM workforce to help close those gaps. On the right-hand side of this screen, you will see the map of all the communities that we have launched in, San Antonio is our tenth driving possibility site across the West. We're very excited about that, the place to launch in four more sites in Toyota's operation currently. This X video is going to highlight a little bit more about how driving possibilities work.
Driving Possibilities is a new way of bringing schools and communities together to create limitless possibilities for all. Here's how it works. First, we put the student at the center. We work with them, their families, teachers, community members, and local business partners to understand what each student needs in order to succeed and what's standing in their way. Young people can face many roadblocks on their journey, the stress of not having enough food, transportation issues, lack of access to the right class, the right mentor, or even the right supports. We listen to what students need and then we work together to come up with solutions. Solutions that help all students thrive at school and in the jobs of the future. Whether it's helping teachers be their best, strengthening STEM programs across all learning levels, meeting students' basic needs such as nourishment and mobility, or reimagining the school day with built-in essential supports like mental health services or caring guidance from a mentor. Working together makes the whole journey stronger, connecting people and programs to create new pathways to opportunity for the problem solvers of tomorrow, contributing to thriving communities, stronger local economies, and limitless possibilities for all.
So diving a little bit more into how, Driving Possibilities takes a holistic approach to helping our students and their success, and we do that by following our conceptual model, this four-part approach that focuses on innovative and on STEM, so increasing awareness, excitement, and confidence in STEM for our students, as well as professional and leadership development, making sure our teachers feel supported.
Making sure our teachers feel supported and confident in their ability to teach STEM to their students. At the school program, the ongoing support, so harnessing our students not only during the school day, but also socially, emotionally at the school as well. And last but not least, mobility and basic skills. We know that if our students' needs are not met outside of the four walls of the school, it will impact their ability to succeed inside your classrooms. All of these work together to help us achieve our North Star, which is increasing access to STEM education and career pathways and resources. This is a snapshot of our Driving Possibilities project phases. So we take all of our Driving Possibilities sites through a iterative approach, roughly averaging about twelve months in our sites. And it's modeled after the Toyota Business Practice Model. We spend time within all of these phases, take specialized coaching from our communities, Mr. Stisano goes. We took a lot of intentional time and space months to make sure that we're bringing together all of our partners to make this work happen. But we're very excited to be in the implementation phase of this work kicking off and continuing to plan, do, check, act, go, P C A. We owe it to her to make sure that we're continuously in this process.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me. Thank you all for coming. I'm Heidi Daly. I'm senior manager at Toyota. I have the privilege and honor of leading the teams that take this work across all of our organizational teams. And so this is my first time leading the San Antonio team. And I just want to say how impressed I am with this group because they get it already. Like you are just at implementation stage, and they get it. They're working together. They're looking at the data, and they're putting goals in place. They want to get started. And so don't tell anybody else that San Antonio might be your new favorite driving. Okay. So I have the opportunity to talk to you about what have we done since our programs have launched in different sites. So this is our reach and our student serve. So this is our national footprint. We are in the love of sites of launch. Now, six of those have been in flight for about two years, and then the rest were then flight for one year or just a month. In these schools, we have about fifty thousand students enrolled in sixty-nine schools, and we're partnering with fourteen different organizations across the country. We launched sixty-one programs that run across all of our Driving Possibility sites, and they are everything from STEM education, teacher professional development, basic needs, on-campus support. We got twenty-eight new programs funded just this past half of the year, so we're super excited about that. Our total committed is just over seventy-five million dollars today, and we're continuing to get that forward. Okay. So one of the big things that we talked about, we heard today is like, well, how do we know that we're moving towards progress? So we're super excited to show how impressive you are. First, to see these externally, so we're thrilled to be able to share this with you today. This is our progress work outcomes. So early data indicates some significant progress in the beginning stages of this continuing of your work that we're doing. So I want to pack this just a little bit. We look at foundational outcomes. So that's that for moving here. All of those things that happen for kids that just make hard time concentrating in school. We did a survey of our sites that had been in flight for one to two years. And we surveyed them in the beginning of this academic year and at the very end. And then we started to ask these questions. We saw a thirteen percentage point increase in the number of students that were connected to resources to be able to improve those areas, really addressing those foundational outcomes. In the middle, you'll see year turn outcomes. So again, we asked those that were delivering and executing our Driving Possibilities programs in all of these long sites. What's the average increase in students' awareness of STEM in STEM careers and STEM career? We saw a thirty-one percentage point increase from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So we are super, super proud of that stat. But in the standpoint of STEM, we saw a twenty-one or twenty-three percent increase in confidence of STEM. So students that feel like they're going to be successful in STEM education or STEM careers, nineteen percentage point increase. Very, very proud of that. Then we give them to the intermediate outcomes. So that's kind of that student long-term trajectory. So the number of students increased, students increased thirteen percentage points for those that were committed to continue with their STEM education, STEM career, career, and success. So really, we're super proud of those statistics, and we can't wait to share those new outcomes with you guys here at the same time. Okay, our impact. So our Driving Possibilities partners, those that our school districts, our community partners that are doing this work with us, have some, and in this survey, now how they think this program is working. So you can see five percentages across the board. Access to resources, capacity building for students, for teachers, for families, upward mobility, reporting, you know, our employees are, I'm succeeding. Our Driving Possibilities administrators are telling us that we're connecting students, supporting all those opportunities. And then student trajectory. So an increase in PT's concentration, that being involved, and certain student trajectory. And there's just a few quotes from some of our Driving Possibilities administrators. So really, really good feedback. We're thrilled after all the hard work that's been put into this, our communities, our schools. These are the numbers that we want to see. And this is just a little bit about, Melinda mentioned our employees. So one of the big things that's important to Toyota, you probably know this, is our employees really need and really need that. So one of the things that our CEO at Toyota has said, this is great. Let's do this work. We like this work. I want you to engage those employees. We need our employees going out into the schools when they can, leaning in with their know-how and their resources. So we've had over eleven hundred team members across the country volunteer in Driving Possibilities programs. We're not looking at anything else to be done, just the Driving Possibilities program. And in fact, we had a twenty-five percent increase in the number of team members that volunteer in Driving Possibilities programs this year. So we are very, very proud of the team members. Thank you. All right. And I think I'm turning you over to someone else.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Lozano and Board of Trustees. Thank you for having us here today. I'm gonna go over what we're doing now. You've heard the planning phases. You've heard all the partners that are involved, and what we'd like to do is tell you where we are now. And just as a quick reminder, this is a five-year investment by Toyota, and it is investing in an entire feeder pattern. It is investing in the Con Valley Elementary as Phase One, then Legacy Middle, and East Central High School. So it will encounter all of those students along that feeder pattern. This was really important to Toyota USA, as well as the local plant, to ensure that we reach that North Star of accessing more STEM careers for your students. There are two phases of this project, and these are the important phases that was already talked about in the video and what we see here. There was a lot of work one summer. I actually don't remember what year that was, but I don't think it was last summer. Maybe it was. It was last summer.
The summer before.
Yes, we were doing work the summer before. I've been with them for a few summers now. But about last summer, we came out of the schools, and we visited with their administrators. We were listening to some of the needs that your students have and some of the needs your families have. And so what came of those visits were these two streams of work. One around STEM academic performance and the other around wraparound services and basic needs. And these two are really important for what already has been said. You've heard from our Toyota partners that, and you also heard, I think, earlier from either Dr. Coleman or Jeanette about students need both of those and those strategies, the wraparound services, the access to different resources, to be able to be successful in school. And I think I heard earlier, the attendance was really important. You need to have consistent attendance work and seat time, right? So that students have really important learning time. And this is the strategy that has been put together with the help of Driving Possibilities and Toyota, and of course, the wonderful administrators at the Con Valley, and of course, your administrators at the district. So two strings of work, one around STEM, which would include professional development, experiential learning opportunities, and also to work with a vendor that you already work with, Project Be the Way. And I'd like to record, happy to record, that we started this week. And I was very excited to meet with your teachers, actually, your teachers. There are teachers. Right, we're all family now. To meet with our teachers, which are your teachers, from the Con Valley at Texas A&amp;M University San Antonio, we hosted them along with Project Be the Way to start that process of this professional development with the teachers. That was incredibly exciting. Certainly, Ms. Palbadeer and her team will continue this work alongside Project Be the Way in the past. So we're excited on that piece. Around the basic needs, today we had a site visit to a family resource center, which is a one-stop shop for families. And it's sponsored by United Way. So the United Way in San Antonio and Barre County are investing millions of dollars, actually, in rolling out a family resource center right here in your district at the Con Valley San McCaslin. So we saw what one looked like, and it was pretty amazing. And you see the head nods there. It was pretty amazing. We'd love to have you all there, if you'd like, to come and visit to see what they could look like in the Con Valley. But certainly, it'll be customized and tailored for the students in this community and address the needs that the community have raised. Some of the needs that need to be addressed by these resources. So the basic needs and the family resource center is a really big part to help with those wraparound services. These are the two basic, excuse me, two work streams that are launching this year. As you can see, we've actually started the professional development already. This right here is a theory of action or a logic model, if you will, that shares with us what your current condition is and then what the desired outcome is. And I'll go to the desired outcome because we want to go toward those North Stars, right? This desired outcome is for the hands-on STEM and professional development is ultimately to create, co-create a program that integrates hands-on STEM into your curriculum, into your existing curriculum and your existing professional frameworks. And we would see that throughout the day, throughout the school day, and we will also support that with professional development and ensuring that there's increases in STEM careers and the STEM framework throughout your entire vertical alignment of that pipeline. We are starting with the Con Valley STEM Academy, and so teachers are being trained. Teachers will have coaches and be supported on that front. But ultimately, what we want is for your entire feeder pattern to have that opportunity all the way up to the high schools as well. Just a notation here, this hands-on STEM and professional development, what is funded is specifically is the K through fifth Project Be the Way curriculum. So you know that that is using the Toyota funds and investment. Also, we are funding a STEM facilitator. That person is still, we're still recruiting that person, so STEM facilitators are out there. Great. And in addition to that, experiential learning field trips. We do understand that field trips and having exposure to STEM careers in different ways is important. Sometimes when we think about STEM, we're only thinking about science, engineering, and math. And really, there are all kinds of careers that have STEM-related needs and skill sets. And so we want to expose your students to those careers. We're also funding the STEM professional development, utilizing A&amp;M faculty, but also utilizing faculty that have experience throughout and expertise throughout the entire state. So not just A&amp;M, although we're for A&amp;M, so them too, but also making sure that your students aren't just focusing on somebody that is local, but if we have to bring in somebody national or somebody that needs to come in specifically for a resource, we're working on that as well. So that's been funded under the Toyota Foundation Grant. This is the basic needs. As I said, there's two of those work streams. This is the basic needs. And again, we have the current condition, the ideal condition, and the desired outcomes. And really, going to the desired outcome here is that we also co-create or co-design a centralized hub that includes district and local partners like yourselves, as well as other resources. And this includes that family resource center that I just spoke about, that is by the United Way, that will be at the Con Valley. We intend to have big dreams here with you all. We intend to start at the Con Valley, but United Way just received a mobile unit. And we are hopeful that mobile unit will serve the entire district. So we'll start at the Con Valley, but hope to be able to serve the entire district, not just with the space at the Con Valley, but also with that mobile unit as well. So, and you'll see that both of these are STEM work, the academic work, along with those basic needs is for that entire feeder pattern. And especially with the basic needs, it's for your entire district. So anyone in the district that has children with S I C can make an appointment and go to the family resource center at the Con Valley. So all of that is exciting. I do want to take a point of privilege and say that we will have a ribbon penny based on your calendar, Mrs. Lozano, so we'll come to reach out to you and make sure that everybody is invited to that ribbon penny because it's actually a really special event to have one of these hubs in the school, and we're excited for that option. Aside from all of that, we are still working on the next set of phases. So we do hope to come back to you and report to you on how this work is happening and rolling out and implementation phase. And just so you know, we have hired a faculty director. So you may see her, and she's actually gonna get a badge, I think. So she'll be legit. And this is Jeanette Morales. She was introduced a bit more, but I did, earlier rather, I did want to share with you. Jeanette is your Driving Possibilities Project Manager and will be the liaison back and forth from Toyota USA, really protecting the time of your principal at the Con Valley, but also making sure that the coordination happens. So Ms. Palbadeer isn't coordinating everything. It's gonna be your Driving Possibilities Project Director. But then the coordination will happen alongside Ms. Palbadeer and of course, the district. So we want to thank you for your partnership. This could not have happened without, number one, your amazing administrators and teachers, but in addition to you all saying yes. So once again, thank you for saying yes.
Okay, I got eight point three. It's putting out a report.
Yeah, trustees, this report is, like I promised last month, extremely heavy on new hires. The hiring managers across the district, principals in particular, and the personnel office have been extremely busy. They've done a great job recruiting top talent and onboarding top talent. And as very briefly said, we've got about seven hundred-ish teacher positions across the district, and we're down to four vacancies. Three at the high school, one at the Con Valley, three are special ed positions, and one is in each of our position in high school. We just tend to have those skills before the first day at school. And that, in this climate, the supply and demand for teachers is phenomenal. There's lots of positive in that. Obviously, the appeal of this school district and the community, but also the hard work of the teacher residency program and all the recruitment efforts that we employ as a district, through the leadership personnel team. So we'll continue the hard work of recruiting top talent, but most importantly, developing that talent, keeping that talent is the next one here. If you have any questions, we'll add additional information about anything in that report.
The next item is a four-line question.
John Thomas? Sir?
So this last month, there was a lot of progress. Can't see it there, but actually some pictures were taken. All of the age packages have now improved. Good progress with the student studio across that center section of the building, as well as the panel of fall. Inside the building, most of the metal studs are actually up and in place. The follow-up of that is the drywall texturing and painting on that first one. You can see there. So good progress, as well as on the site. You can see the football field. Basements are poured around the edge for the track, the reasons, and then the gravel is in place. So here a couple of months was. So here a couple of months, we'll start seeing stretch from the top. Victory also is on pace here, good progress there, most of the structure is up, the last piece of that two-story section there in the back, the house of most of the people who are kids, that was coming right behind it. The site itself is now is ready, so they've got to put that, that's great work done, and they're cleaning up the yard as they go, getting that still picked up. Really good progress there, actually, we're. T D, you've opened ninety-five percent of the metal building up now, with some trenches left, also following that as well, most of the glass is in place, so it's a good progress there. Inside, the metal studs are in place as well, so the drywall will follow here this next month. So all in all, all of these projects are getting their target and on pace. Also, the design for the high school has come along very well. Here this next month, we'll start doing some exercises with our general contractor, some budgets, and see how that, see how that goes. We'll do that budget process there for a couple of months before we finalize that guaranteed maximum pricing for the two-dollar payment. So that process will take a couple of months here. The design for elementary school number ten is on target as well, we'll see us bring the general contractor, he's on process. Do you all have any questions?
What is the progress against the bus barn?
The bus barn is actually still imperfect. Short answer, we've got to keep back to Text Dot, and Text Dot is, we renewed it again, and they might call for us to extend some lane, some turn lanes there on eighty-seven, so we're kind of looking for that process from Text Dot.
So that's the whole.
It's one of the holdups, once we get that approval on the platform, Text Dot, it will then get the final review from City San Antonio, because that one is city as well as county. And then we'll actually get the permitting process there.
Who's going to figure the turn?
That would be on us if that's determined to be something that is needed for our company.
So that has to take place before we get the turn, someone has to.
So yes, sir, so we're viewed by Text Dot on all planning, when we go to develop a site, one of the things that they look at is what the impact is going to give, right? So that always goes to Text Dot, that is, there was a good sound of the county, it's the city, probably the city. And eighty-seven is actually Text Dot. One question, two, as we go to high school, two people, like, two acres is just taken smart. So we would like this started in December or January, and it's what we're hoping. Did everybody onboard as far as stuff on that?
Yeah, trustees, we're bringing E F B local to you this month for first review, first meeting. This is an adjusted policy based on a legislative action in this session, and it refers to library, library materials. You are very familiar with all of the discourse the last couple of years around what's in the school library, take appropriate and certain processes and procedures for ensuring that parents have access to that and that there was a structure, this is the way for communities to have the ability to review those and determine what's appropriate, what's not, what's allowed, what's removed, and so on and so forth. Through legislative, and those things have always been part of the way we operate in school districts across the state. Through legislative actions, mandated, the school districts forum is called the SLAP, which stands for a School Library Advisory Council. The premise behind that, which next month we'll bring you a resolution that is also mandatory, the board, that kind of spells out the details, but the SLAP is intended to be a body made up of parents who are not employees of children who can, that are appointed by each of you, all of you will appoint one parent or more if you so chose, but at least one of these. Board and staff are not voting members, but board pinpoint staff to support that committee, librarians, for example, and curriculum staff to give their list, give them resources so that they can review through the process and spell out by the legislature, then come to the board with recommendations, to the board that they, which in fact, the board needs to approve. They have to meet the law, they have to meet the string, and the scope of work essentially is what I've described since February. So the details of that are kind of spelled out in this initial policy, but more so with the resolution we'll bring next month. So with the board's approval next month of this policy, you'll have the opportunity to study that resolution, which will give further spelled out the details of what the district needs to do to comply. So on behalf of answering your questions, again, this is just the first meeting, this is a chance for the board to deny any of this policy, and give staff some direction if necessary. This is a TASB adapted policy of E F B based on the statute. Through legislative action as well, I've been seeing the local needs slight adjustments. This is the telecommunications or cell phone policy that was passed, states of many of those in schools. Fortunately for us as a community, this was something that we did last year, and so fortunately for us as well, it virtually, to the letter mimics the statute. So our handbooks and our student, our administrative policies at every campus kind of already have for a year, followed when the statute is required. There are a couple of minor exceptions. One is there is the removal of the ability to charge a fifteen-dollar fine, so that is being removed from the policy. The second is adding no cell phone usage during passing periods and a bunch, their roadway has been the case all year, and their bags, roadway, you know. And then lastly, earbuds, watches, there are also communications devices, there's going to be some minor edits to the policy. So this is the policy again, that directly reflects the exact verbiage from the statute. Next month, should you approve this, we'll also review what we deployed last year and show the minor adjustments we made. Again, the good fortune is that we're here in this, and so behavioral changes have been done, institutionalized habitual, we'll just need to tighten a few things and make sure that we're. And during registration, the parents and students, and of course, you see the communication go out through social media as well, already beginning to communicate, that you came around the reminders that this is what we do, but also the small changes. If you have any questions about that.
Why would you remove fifteen dollars?
That statute requires that they took that option, like, forgive them all.
But one, so some understanding issues, we take charge of fifteen dollars, but the parent has to.
Correct.
And maybe, maybe we add some educational literature to when they think of the goal that we will apply, because I know we're going to get, and usually it's negative, it's just they're not educated.
Yes.
So it's, and the parent could have, was also already requiring, so we're familiar with that communication, and we'll continue to consider additional ways to, along the way, add additional communication and education around the line, yes, sir.
Well, what we got feedback on from students and staff and parents was that we saw decreased disciplinary issues, we saw kids talking to each other and not across from each other with their devices, we saw less distraction in the classroom, unanimous across the board, even from kids, it was a pleasant shift, needed kids' aid. So again, there's, it goes along the way, we had to keep them back in the setting, like anything, again, the test boundaries, but I think over the year or two, with a strong start and consistency across the board, we'll see those habits become permanent, and the benefits of managing those things more appropriately in a teaching learning environment, we'll see the benefits of that continue. Yeah, well, yes, adults who, adults who are talking to each other as well.
They're going to make the kids aware that it's an emergency, ready to go.
Yes, sir.
Because kids are not aware that, and they, you know, they have to.
Yes, so it's part of the procedures in the student contact, there's a procedure for how they handle emergencies, to be able to use their phone. One of the things that is allowable in statute, thankfully, that also our parent study group studied this, said was, they did want kids to be able to have their devices upon them and not fade away for emergency purposes. So there is a procedure that the kids will be educated around that, so that both families and children alike will know that there is a point of contact in an urgent situation, a personal process, without this very consequences.
All right, eight point seven.
The STEM, just a couple of things to point out for the calendar, in July, next Tuesday is our district, welcome back at the Patterson, with two sessions, like we've had the last couple of years, one, first one starts at eight AM, second one at ten thirty, so we'll clear the Patterson out in between those sessions, and so let us know if we need special accommodations, we'll have seat and save upfront, it's typical, and encourage being there a little bit early for traffic, in market circumstances, we're encouraging staff to park them as well, just kind of manage that, it's worked pretty well the last couple of years. But that's on the twenty-ninth. On the very first is your board work session, where you'll be focusing upon a few things, the primary board will set, and new budget workshop. So I want to make sure you have that on your calendar. Then in August, first day of school, August seventh, and also, we'll shed more light on it, at the budget workshop on the very first, but we want to tend to be putting a hold on August fourteenth as a potential board workshop. There's a possibility, based on some information we shared on the budget, that there will be some opportunity to talk a little bit more about strategy for responding to some of the budget, budget revenue opportunities, particularly talking around the tax ratification question, option. And so should the thirty-first yield the board's decision, we'll talk further about that, the fourteenth will be that date. Reason being is if the board in the fourteenth board session determines that the tax ratification election was the appropriate thing to call, it has to be the fourteenth of the session. So that between the days of final decision on radio, so if it isn't scheduled yet, we'll take their direction on the thirty-first, I just wanted to put a hold on that thing through. And then on the twenty-first, we have the next regular scheduled board meeting, and on the twenty-ninth, also just want to put a hold on that date for a special meeting. As a reminder, last year, the board, last couple of years, has kind of delineated four work sessions on the calendar for the year. One of those was full setting and budget workshop. The other was board operating procedures review, another was team building and board self-evaluation. And this year, as part of the system of great schools, one of those requirements is to do supportive governance training led by the Texas Education Agency, using the model that they believe represents most high impact framework for whole government. Previously, that was called North Star Governance. That training model was two full days before the school year started, and no more touch months throughout the year. They did pilot even a new model called PATOS, which is an evolution of North Star Governance that is more specific to the system of great schools framework, so aligns to the work we're doing, and it's embedded four times throughout the year. So it's kind of just in time, contextualize the work sessions to really match where we are in the execution of the strategic plan of this year, and it's facilitated by the company called Civic Solutions, which was recommended and endorsed by T D A for the district training. So those sessions, we kind of, our goal was to embed the team building, embed ISO training, embed board operating procedures review, embed the board self-assessment as part of those trainings, in addition to the governance training that comes along with, if that makes sense. So we had to work with Civic Solutions to kind of determine where we can kind of schedule in already busy board calendars, quarterly, roughly, quarterly work sessions with Civic Solutions. And so the first of that, of those meetings is on the twenty-ninth. The benefit of that is that these sessions will cover all, majority of all the board training departments for the year. Of course, you guys do love the year on that always, there are a couple of statutory required trainings that won't be included, you know, like human trafficking, such as student service, but the vast majority of all other required training will be embedded and brought to us as a team, customized to us based on the work rule. And so the twenty-ninth session was, note there that it's full day training, full day work session.
It will be in school, okay?
It will be in school. And I believe that's the longest one, but otherwise, they're pretty intense work sessions. Lots of opportunity for dialogue, decision-making, reflecting on the way we do business, and similar opportunities to prove, again, aligned with the governance framework that seems to be the most required by the agency. And is a condition, is a condition of the funds we receive from T D A, and we're still actually financing the grants and all that, yes, sir. In that same calendar packet, we have back-to-school rates and information, we've seen those online and read them, I just want to put our copy, your packet is all of our schedules for volleyball, football, which are all underway, all tennis, and cross-country. We have you to answer your questions by your information.
So if anything, can I ask you, on the other, some of the proceeds?
Yeah, on this special board meeting. Yes, sir. So we have a few guys who can do the work session in here, we'll do it as student services, help to do this, and check the board, we know and continue to decide where it's most comfortable for that.
Moving on to the action, this is nine, nine point one, please, nine twenty-three, six history and over.
Yeah, trustees, this is a major local document, updated for the context of this year, and this is a newer face and set of goals, so when you think about the North Star Bowl, the board conference goals. So when we think about the North Star goal, the board long range goals, we have to start at the end of our CEG or continuous growth planning process, we have to start operationalizing strategic plans across the system. So we want those plans to align to the work that we're doing at the district level that is intended to move the needle on student outcomes relative with respect to the long range goals and reaching those North Star expectations. So we have four priority areas that we continue to take a look at. Priority was always teaching and learning. And some of the areas that we've got to address in order to enable those academic outcomes are continuing to focus on getting kids at school and having some strategy work and managing some performance around attendance improvement. We have to continue to do some work around schoolwide behavior systems, which are equipping teachers with intentionality around how we manage students in the classroom. Principals and how we manage students in the school building. Make sure there are tight structures and procedures that are reliable, that are consistent, that are clear to the students. And then we reset what we need to the school level to recruit those and make sure they're consistent. But also make sure classroom level to recruit those to be consistent. And the science of behavior suggests that if you do those things, you reinforce behaviors you want more than you're correcting or punishing, then you start to teach those behaviors and kids behave accordingly. And you don't have to punish them often. The whole goal of student code conduct is to improve student behavior. Ultimately, it has to let them learn, so other students can learn, so everybody's safe. Let's make them come to that decisions beyond school. And it's a process and there's a system that has to be district wide and school wide. The second strategy there is around continuing to work on the science behavior district by we call it tier one and two behavior, we get it outside of life. Every year it provides a comprehensive summary of findings. Eighty percent fidelity to the framework, eighty percent level of consistency means that we're going to benefit academic in schools, again, eighty percent in our system. In any given year, we see the highest activity performance. As a school system last year, on as an average, we were sixty nine percent. Our goal is expectation of data as every school will create. So we've been working on this work with a partner in the behavioral science space over a decade. We have some internal institutional knowledge across the system. We're going to recommit to making sure that that's the first layer, the rest is new behavior. The second layer is target seriousness behavior. Last year, we targeted behavior referrals across the board. This year, we're going to target seriousness behaviors in particular. The guild will see some very transparent numbers at the end of the year, some expectations begin the year, and some progress throughout the year. In effort to make sure we reduce some seriousness behavior across the system. In particular, in areas where we see it, like billows, and you'll know where those are once we start building out individual plans for every senior campus and then creating reporting mechanisms for the board to see on a monthly basis throughout the year. You'll also then see us continue to focus on academic outcomes which relate to state accountability. So we expect the great results that we see this year to be the starting point. We don't expect the look of we're being there anymore. It's all gas and brakes going forward. And you're going to continue to see us pivot from there, continually advance our position in terms of student outcomes. More kids, more the more the time at the standard in the year. In priority two, we're talking about recruitment and retention of high quality staff. That area for us internally is paying attention to our retention rates for all classes of employees. We know where we end of the year and we know where we expect to be across every job classification. We'll monitor that and we'll implement things that ensure that employees have what they need. They have great leadership, that they have a voice, and that they're supported appropriately. But also that employees are held accountable. Nobody likes to, if they're evil, to hang around the donkey. And there's nothing like sanctioning and confidence in the moralized high performing employees. So there will be strategies then to ensure that that recruitment and attention continues to be better than it was this year. This year was the best that we had. They had eighty five percent retention of professional staff, eighty five percent retention of non-incentive staff, which is the highest retention rates we've seen in years. We expect that to be ninety percent for each except the non-incentive going into this next year. The third priority is around community and strategic partnership. You saw one partnership with Toyota today. Those things happen by design, not by chance. To get strong partnerships, you have to be an organization that is worthy of being partnered with. There has to be a co-invested and mutual benefit. We've done a great job prioritizing that as an organization. But what we've realized is what we really want to to level up. We started to do some of that with things like past breakfast and things like that. We really want to bring the community in and have two way conversations. Where we can begin to see where our common interests are to determine how we can help each other achieve what we want to achieve. So we partnered with an organization called School Cafe. It's a nonprofit organization in the area across the nation that helps facilitate community conversations. So every school in the system is going to have a fall cafe. It's a conversation very similar to what you experienced with past breakfast. We invite partners and families and all the things and meet along with students and adults sitting around the tables and have conversations. And from that, then we determine where some opportunities are for partnership. In the spring, every school is going to do a lecture school and then again, the partnership with the same organization. It is a project that they determined they want to do to show love in their school. Whether that's improvement projects, whether that's any kind of bringing the community in and having a community, whatever they decide, we feel of all kinds of ways. And then thirdly, which we'll talk a little bit more at the whole setting conference, we think there's some opportunity to codify and communicate what partners we have in community businesses and support these advice and students in schools. We have many, but you should be able to know who they are. And we think if there's a way to do that, a way that we may have decided about. The benefits that we both get from our partnership one another and make that visible. So that's probably what we're going to kind of focus on in priority three. The priority four is continue to make sure that we have phenomenal first ratings. That's the most comprehensive accountability framework for ensuring that we're good students. But the kind of dig a little deeper, we want to make sure that we're managing our assets in ways that are responsible. That are ensuring we get maximum life out of those resources that we are able to get. Different funding streams that have available that we're using appropriately, we're maintaining, we're accounting for them. And if it's time and their life has been let it's forced, we discard those in appropriate ways. So that is a priority, continue to do that at a hundred percent liability. As far as our budgets go, we know that we've had some struggles in the last couple of years, like most every district didn't say. And so the last couple of years, we've cut ten percent out of our budgets and operate mean or even under operated. But we also had goals to stay within seventy five or ninety percent of our allocated budgets by really being conservative, thoughtful about the things we have to do, about the things we like to do. And as a result of that, when we did the budget workshop, you'll see that while we adopted the deficit budget, did pass the later and had to eat a big chunk of budget we were hoping to have. But we're able to reconcile the budget to demonstrate the really, really tight stewardship and we'll continue to do that. And then lastly, just making sure that there are student information systems that will code the kids appropriately. There are funding streams tied to student needs and different student groups. But if you don't code them correctly, you don't generate that revenue. And so we have to have systems in place, continue to have systems in place to really make sure that we're trusting, verifying. But we also have internal controls for ensuring that we're doing that at a high level of accuracy and loyalty. And so that's where it's important to see in our shore. So again, this is separate from the board's North Star goal and long range goals, which you guys will reestablish on the thirty first. This is the internal work of things we know we have to continue to level up if we're going to continue moving towards that achievement of those goals on the same trajectory and increase that trajectory. So with your consideration approval tonight, once approved, it will allow the campuses to then take these and customize them based on the data of each respective site. And for departments where these priorities are. So you'll see, the whole setting works out to examples of how this priority goes from the district level and then how it's customized, contextualized on every single campus and every single department. So we're all hands on deck, working towards the same direction to ensure that that synergy results in more of the results like you saw today. So I'll be happy to answer the questions.
I have a question and this comment on on the discipline part of the transparency. You said transparency and I appreciate that. Definitely, I'm having transparency.
Yep.
And make sure that and the way that I talked about the last time, make sure that our teachers, our our staff, supporting staff, all of them feel supported. Right, not the last thing that I want is to, you know, I got a height is because I'm the one forcing, we want to see it. But we need to be supported. I speak for myself, I say I'm supportive of just make sure that we get it to get it right and know that we have that. It's not a number thing for me, it's just I want to make sure we're helping these, all students. We're taking care of them and we want to make sure that they're being supported. So transparency, I will come on the the other. And then on the other, on partnerships, you know, we got kids, our state reps involved as well, our city leaders involved as well. So we need to start making some changes on our asset board. We need to work on things that will be partnerships will advocate, that's kind of our our day. Advocate for kids, for teachers, for principals at the state level, local level, and partnerships for the community. So I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, I recommend board approval of the twenty twenty five, twenty six district annual results measures.
I have a recommendation from this president, do I have a motion?
Sure.
I have a motion for Mr. Crossbow, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, but Mr. Santos always in favor, all eyes always closed, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is that be candid, endorse that region twenty which is enough. Do you have a motion to accept the endorsement of Mr. Santos to region twenty? Have a motion for Mr. Crossbow, do I have a second? I'll second.
Second.
So I have a motion from Mr. Crossbow, do I have a second? All those in favor, all eyes closed, motion carries. I need to make a side and approval of delegates to the tax commission twenty twenty five.
Madam President, yes, I'd like to be the delegate.
Will we need an alternate?
We do.
Anybody else who would like to be an alternate?
I'll be a delegate, so I will serve as a substitute.
So we have Mr. Crossbow, is she delegate? And we have Mr. Santos as the alternate. Do I have a motion to accept this as approval? I have a motion for Mr. Yarah, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Mulkey, all those in favor, all eyes closed, motion carries. Next section is the consensus of the president. Would like to call item ten one, Mr. Santos.
Ten, ten one?
I'm sorry, ten one.
Yeah, trustee, so with us tonight is Edra from line order and very familiar. They, as you know, are attorneys who help us with the property taxes and collections and do a phenomenal job, great partners in the district for many years. And if you'd be in here, Edra, if you don't mind, share with the board a little bit about what this particular recommendation is about.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mr. Santos, like the evening members of the board. I wanted to make sure that my at what I'm offering, as you can see, is also was recognized and I think that we're being here with us. So with the calendar agenda this evening is a new contract for the continuation of the collection of delinquent taxes for decent privacy. And so we've been working with the school district for many years, so there's nothing to do about that. There is a new provision in the our new way that we are doing the contracts that we will be coming in the draft of July three. And so what that is, is in the past, we have had our contracts to last four or five years as a term. And then we come back and renew the contract. The way that we're doing all of our contracts now for the delinquent tax collection is that each contract is more than one year's term. And then it reviews on a basis, on an annual basis every. However, there is a sixty day notice to come in at any time that the board can exercise if it so chooses. So it actually gives a little bit more control to you all as our clients. So if you wanted to ever get rid of that people, which you never will, if you wanted to, you have the ability to to do that. So that's the next section.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Are you?
All right, Madam President, I recommend board approval of line order Valvin and Larry Sampson for a one year contract for the delinquent tax collection services and yearly options in the stated contract this season.
We have a recommendation from the secretary, do I have a motion?
Sure.
So a motion from Mr. Mulkey, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Crossbow, all those in favor, all eyes closed, motion carries. Do you need to accept these? Do I have a motion to accept this? Have a motion for Mr. Mulkey, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Santos, all those in favor, all eyes closed, motion carries. Eleven, the one, Louis needs to evaluate his financial life, please, for a motion. Do I have a motion for Mr. Crossbow, do I have a second? All those in favor, all eyes closed, motion carries. Yes, it's all, make sure that we think it out. Excited to spill the German, all those in favor, do I have a motion, Madam President, all those in favor?